Let's call this afternoon's work session to order, please. Madam Clerk, would you read the role?
Yes, Ms. Cole here. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Welber.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose same sign. Motion carries. We have an agenda. We are in order. We, as Michelle, Ms. Michelle Wiener just said, we're just also used to looking at spreadsheets. We just thought we'd do another one. This one is to talk about the sewer. Ms. Wiener, if you'd like to, tell us what we're doing, please.
Yep, Michelle Wiener, Chief Financial Officer. Excited it's easier to stand out here so I can see you than stand behind you. Some of you may remember looking at this draft a little bit in the sewer department meeting when we met with them. I'm just kind of providing it for background information. The far right column is the fiscal 2016 budget as published in the paper. And if you want to drop to the bottom line on the first page, it shows an annual operating shortfall of about 1.0, nearly $1.45 million. So that's what I think needs to be, we have to address it now. Most of that is due to capital improvements that we're being required to make to the system. And I'm going to let Bob Bamsey with AECOM Technical Consultants talk to you a little bit about what the capital improvements are that we need to make.
Bob, how are you?
Great. I love talking to people about spending money. Yeah. I think, I think as an introductory, keep in mind that we're going to have two parts to our system. We have the collection system and we have the treatment plant. We have capital needs in both. And if you recall, we just awarded a contract for a belt press and that project will get going. That's one of the treatment plant needs. And then overriding this whole thing, we have to keep in mind that we're in this negotiations with EPA. And we have additional meetings with them coming up. So some of this, it's our best shot at what is going to take place. And that could all change when we meet with EPA in the near future. Okay. So on the treatment plant side, as I said, we've got the third belt press and that project is a, is a 2015, 2016 project. And then we have a small project at the treatment plant which we're being urged to do, which we call the FEQ overflow. And if you recall, we have flow equalization facilities. EPA is requesting that we use some of our existing capacity at the plant for storage during wet weather. So we have the FEQ overflow project, which I would classify more as a treatment issue, but it's really related to the wet weather flow problems that we have. And we have a drip dispersal treatment plant, planned out at the airport. We met with DNR again last week on that project. It is coming. And then the last thing on the plant side, we have an upgrade of our control system in the capital improvements plan. So that's a, that's a great upgrade. Keep in mind, we've got a grant to construct this facility beginning in about '94, '95. And we're still living and working with the same computers and PLCs that we had at that time, so we need to upgrade. So that kind of relates to the treatment plant work in the immediate future. The big one that's out there on the treatment plant side is nutrient removal. State has a new nutrient drive, if you would. And the issue there is lowering the total nitrogen and phosphorus in point source discharges throughout the basin as it relates to the epoxy zone in the Gulf of Mexico. Okay? And I will throw this in just for your own, because everybody needs a little tidbit. Ninety percent of the nutrient issues in the Mississippi River are non-point source derived. Ninety, nine zero. Okay? All right. So what that means is that most of it is runoff, okay? But the point source discharges, i.e. the wastewater treatment plants in the basin are being required to remove the nutrients in an effort to aid in the depletion of the oxygen that we have in the Gulf. There's the end of the tidbit. Now we're back to, here we go. All right, that's huge to us, by the way. I can tell you that. The system that they've anticipated right now, our discharge permit expired, well, it didn't expire, okay? Our discharge permit ran out last Saturday on the 28th of February.
By the way, you did a great job getting that paperwork in.
Well.
Last Saturday morning. Thank you.
It would have been nice to have got a little more notice.
Just what you wanted to do.
But we got it done. All right. So we, and they're going to, I think what's going to happen is they're going to give us, they're going to give us a renewed permit with some conditions. And one of those conditions is to study what it's going to take to get the nutrient removal in place on this facility. And right now, we've been looking at this thing for five years knowing it's coming. And it's a, it's a healthy ticket, okay? It's in the 20 to 30 million dollar range. Okay. So they give you two years to do the study, to show that it's not cost effective to do it. Then you show them it's not cost effective to do it, and they say, come back and do it anyway. And then you will have some period of time to implement it. So we're probably another five years beyond that before we have to have it done. But, but that's a huge number that booms out there before us in the seven to 10 year timeframe. Keep that in mind as we, as we talk about this. Then we have been working, as you know, on reducing the flows in the collection system. We have the footing grade removal program which is going, and that must continue. We have the cured and placed pipelining program that we were just getting ready to have the pre-construction meeting on phase two of that. And that must keep going as well. We have a project that's very nearly completed in the design phase for what we call the dry run interceptor. Excuse me. That's basically an interceptor that would start at Kimball and San Martin, which now pumps across San Martin and flows down through the Ninth Street corridor where we have some SSO, some, some surcharging problems. It would take that flow and redirect it down toward crossroads. We come behind crossroads and hook it up to what we call the, what some people call the Texas street lift station, what I call the Hawkeye Tech Lift Station. But in any event, we have capacity at that point. And that takes a load off, some loading off the Ninth Street corridor, but also opens that area for economic development. Right now, that's very limited by the sewer capacity out there. Okay. We have several pumping stations that are in need of significant upgrade. Right now, we have four of them that are an issue. We have the infamous Hackett Road Pump Station. We'll talk about that separately in a second. We have Titus, which currently needs a significant upgrade and a relocation of the discharge point that will free up some capacity for us. We have a small pumping station at Douglas Street, which is undersized and the location of that is extremely limiting. And then we have the Highway 63 South Pump Station, which is, is just flat out wearing out. It's a, it's a precast steel system that's in the ground and, and is corroding. So we have those ahead of us on the collection side. And then we have what we, what's called the Northwest Interceptor. And this project has been in the concept phase for a long, long time. It was actually one of the projects that we had in the original grant when we went after the, the money in the 90s. This would be a gravity line that would run from, say Falls Avenue and Black Hawk Creek and would gravity up and eliminate the Hackett Road Pumping Station. That would be very advantageous. It takes the flow off. Cal Congress eliminates the, the Hackett Road Pump Station. And if we can get that scheduled and going, then it would eliminate approximately a million dollars worth of work on the Hackett Road Lift Station, which we'd have ahead of us if we don't do that Northwest Interceptor. So when, when we look out, including the nutrient removal and all of the projects that I just listed off, we have capital needs in the neighborhood of 125 to 130 million dollars. Okay? And Michelle's rate increase isn't going to quite cover that for next year. We're not going to get them all done. So we are in the process of trying to stage that out over a reasonable period of time to see what we can make. But we have needs now to do a number of these things so that it will keep going and we can keep EPA in our court to say, yeah, I think they're making sincere efforts to get these problems resolved. Reducing the flow is a huge thing from our perspective. We must keep doing our projects to continue to reduce the SSO's. One other piece of capital that we're looking at, one of the things that EPA is requiring us to do, and one of the things the court is requiring us to do, is internal inspections of the sewer system. Today, we are supposedly on a program to do, to clean and televise all of the storm sewer on a five-year rotation. Roughly speaking, that's about 80 miles a year. We're also, I think, are on a program now, although we haven't heard this officially, that the EPA is going to require that we do the sanitary sewer, and I think, right now, I think we're going to get a 10-year rotation there. So there's another 40 miles. So we have to clean and televise about 120 miles a year. We are on pace this year, I'm looking over at Larry, but I think we're going to do 60 to 80 miles. That sound right?
Closer to 60.
Okay. We're going to fall well, well short of the 120 that we need. We need additional equipment. However, what we're looking at now is we think we can get some additional equipment and pretty much double our pace with maintaining the same staffing levels for that. So a little, little bit early to tell you that for sure yet, but we are cognizant of the fact that once we buy that equipment, we have to staff it to keep it in use. And we think we've got, our high on some that is a combination cleaning and TV that can be run by one guy, whereas today we have a cleaner and a television, and it takes two. But that's another million dollars worth in the next sometime. We're hoping to get one camera yet this year, try it out and make sure that that works, and then continue to expand that so that we can do this 120 miles a year and stay on. It's got to do with the core and EPA. That's the end of my prepared remarks, even though it doesn't sound like it prepared because I didn't know it was going to be the case here. But I'm certainly open to questions or...
Mr. Schmidt? Two questions, Bob. First, didn't, I thought within the last year or so, we bought some additional equipment, hired some more staff. Am I mistaken?
No, you're not. We did.
Okay. So this is additional equipment in addition to that additional equipment, correct?
I think we have one fairly new camera and...
But, but no additional staff, is what I'm hearing.
And then one that's pretty old.
All right.
And we are double shifting that new one now.
Right. That's what I was thinking. Okay. And then the other question, going back to early on in your presentation, would you talk a little bit more about this, the 90% that's in the river? And are you telling me that what we're being required to do will have no impact on that? Is that, is that what I heard you say?
I, I, I'm not saying not, all right?
I'm sorry, 10%?
We will have some impact. The point I was trying to make is that, and DNR did this investigation and identified that 90% of the nutrients in the river, in the Cedar River Basin, which contributes then to the Mississippi, are non-point source related. So that means farm runoff is, is contributing a majority of the nutrient to the river that is, that's their saying contributes to the epoxy zone in the Gulf, which is what the whole program is supposed to, to address. DNR has adopted a program that says, okay, we can, we can make point sources on a mandatory basis reduced because we have permits. And they're working with all the farm organizations to try and reduce the non-point source on a voluntary basis.
Is this the same, is this the same group that we had on the misinformation on the floodways in Waterloo and the bad maps, or are these two different government agencies?
It wouldn't, DNR would not have been...
That'd be the EPA, right?
That was FEMA.
That was FEMA. Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions about Bob right now? I'm just kind of trying to give you a heads up of what's coming and, and one of the reasons that we're asking for a, for you to increase at this time. Michelle?
Thanks, Bob. And sincerely, thank you for last Saturday. That, that was... All right. No problem. We got it done. We did. Well, you did, and you and Larry did, so thank you.
So, the next question might be, how much are we having to increase that? And I have to tell you, that was the first time I've heard a 20 to 30 million dollar figure about denitrification, so... That's more. and what we can... How much a rate increase would generate. And this, I've used a fairly conservative estimate because we have different rate schedules for a couple of our larger industrial customers. But Dennis Clark and Mary Radkovich at the Water Works very kindly helped me come up with some projections on the number of commercial industrial gallons CCFs that we process at the sewer plant. So unfortunately, it looks like a fairly substantial increase if you look at the percentage wise, nearly 15%. But for residential property, we'd be talking about $3.35 a month or $40 a year, which will allow us to issue $6 million in bonding, plus continue to complete probably about a million dollars of improvements directly from the operating fund. So that, that will get us a start on all the capital projects. We, we are still discussing what we're going to be required to do for the EPA, so more to come on that. If the $6 million a year gets enough improvements done to satisfy EPA and DNR, the proposal would be, I don't know that we'd even need an increase next year, but after that, we'd probably be talking about 4% to 5% a year annually for the next five years or so. And that, I don't, I hesitate to put that very firm at this point because again, we're, we don't know what EPA will determine is acceptable, and the Department of Natural Resources. So there will have to be more to come on that. But my best guess today is if we could put the 15% in for this year, that will get us started on that annual bonding program. And if we continue that annually, additional increases will be required to keep meeting the debt service for the additional. So the percent sounds like a lot, the dollars not probably quite so overwhelming, but... Yes?
Could you repeat again in dollars rather than percents how much that is for the average household?
Average household is $3.35 per month, approximately $40 per year to do that.
Further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Michelle, I've been asked over the weekend by several people, why wasn't this brought up during our budget discussions?
Well, it was brought up at the department budget meeting.
At our meeting the other night, this is another surprise.
It's not a surprise because we talked about it in a public meeting that was the department meeting. We, I would have been happy to talk about it Thursday night, but we had a three and a half hour meeting to talk really about the property tax rate. And as we all looked at Thursday night, that property tax rate is only 25% of our revenue sources. So, yeah, we could have, we could have talked about it then. It's hard to get everybody to focus on all these topics at once. And we did talk about it, I mean, this, I believe February 17-ish, somewhere around that timeline, we did have one of our department bud, departmental budget meetings where we talked about the operating budget and discussed the shortfall at that time. We were continuing to work on the capital improvement program at that time, and I was still trying to figure out what we might be able to work in. There's, there's a lot of factors in selling bonds. We, we, we could say that we're going to do 20 million dollars worth of work next year, and I could sell 20 million dollars worth of bonds. But if we can't actually get the engineering design completed and under construction, then that bond money just sits there and we're paying interest. So we've got to balance what we can bite off and swallow in addition to what we need. So we are still working on that, and that's why we're here today to talk about this.
Ms. Cole?
The sewer fund has nothing to do with the 8, 10, 11, does it?
It does not. The sewer fund is funded with user fees, which is one reason it's kind of logical to separate it from the actual property tax budget hearing. Most of the communities around us, as they, as they have raised rates, have not been in their primary budget hearing that I've noticed.
But they're two separate funds. This is an enterprise fund.
Two separate funds. This is a, this, yes, this is considered an enterprise or a business type fund that needs to fund its own expenses, which is why when we're going to increase bonding this dramatically for, it needs a rate increase to support that.
Are there interdepartmental charges to the sewer fund?
There are, because a lot of our administrative departments provide services to the sewer fund.
But you're in the general fund.
Most of them are in the general fund.
So it does...
So we do repay the general fund with it.
So it does affect the general fund.
Well, it does affect it, but it didn't increase it.
Can we, can we get a list of the EPA demands that they want us to do and a list of the use of funds for this million bucks? Can we get a detailed list of what we're going to spend this money on?
The projects for the capital, you mean?
Yes, for the extra money.
I don't know that we necessarily have the list of EPA demands yet. That's still in process. We know the original projects and we are, I think, I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar. Noel, do you have yours right at hand? I think we're meeting about the waste management projects tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Or maybe Wednesday? Wednesday.
3 o'clock?
3 o'clock. So we will be discussing the projects in the CIP for the sewer system at 3 o'clock on Wednesday.
Yeah, you should have all just gotten invitations today, Tom, for CIP meetings that are going to start tomorrow, that you are all invited to. And...
I was holding off asking, planning to schedule those until we were through the budget hearing because I just can't be doing all of them at the same time.
3 to 4 PM for floor conference room.
And, but the projects are the ones that mostly are the ones that Bob just explained to you. That's why we asked him to come and talk about those capital projects so that you could see what we have on the drawing board to complete with the first round of that. There is also a five-year calendar of the next set of projects. And as I said, the 20 to 30 million dollars for the denitrification is not currently on that list, so...
And we, Tom, we don't have a list of demands from EPA yet. We are hoping that we're whittling that list that we will inevitably and eventually get with the things that we're doing. We hope we whittle that down so that we don't get that as a demand. So we can't give you a list. Bob, am I misstating that, of demands from EPA at this time? Would you address that for me?
Yeah, I think you...
You're going to have to come to the mic. You're going to have to come to the mic, Bob, please.
I think you're correct. And I think it's important to remember, DNR, I'm sorry, EPA and DNR are going to be interested in the results. They're not going to say, this is what you have to do. This is not the project that you have to do. They're going to say, you have to do something to get to point A, or from point A to point B. So they're not going to say, you have to get the footing grades out. They're going to say, you have to solve the SSO problem. Okay? So I think we're going to be able to get the list from EPA that says, here's the things we have to do, and we could identify why we're doing the capital improvements under one of those. But they're not going to give us specific projects necessarily to do.
Thank you. That answer you, Tom?
I just, maybe we shouldn't be acting on this tonight when we don't really know what we are going to be required to do.
Well, I think... I think that we know enough to know that the critical things that we have put in next year are things we have to do regardless of whatever happens. And we also hope that it will indicate that we are taking serious measures to fix the issues in our system. So I, I don't, I don't think there's any reason to wait. They're not going to say, don't do anything. And they're not going, I mean, it's, it's with us and our engineers to determine how we get to those goals. And we're fairly confident that the things that are being proposed, in fact, I, I think I'd probably say we're certain, the things we're proposing are all going to help us meet those requirements, whatever they might be. We just don't know the final deadlines maybe and exactly what they're looking for. We know in general terms what has to be done, and these are very important milestones to get started with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
We don't want them to tell us what to do.
That's correct.
We're trying to be proactive and we understand what the root cause of the problems are. are, and we're trying to address the root causes of the problem. And not get into a position where we're actually told what to do, and how much to do, and when to do it.
When to do it.
We're trying to be proactive and do the right thing.
Okay? Any further questions, Michelle, this time?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Close, or adjourn.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed in the minutes of March 2nd.
2nd.
We have a motion in 2nd, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairman, person, I'd be delighted to take those travel requests under new business.
Please, thank you.
First, yes, first we have Captain Leibold and Lieutenant Payne, who go to the National Academy FBI Retrainer in Burlington, Iowa, April 22nd through the 24th, that are costing not to exceed $956. Next, we have Sergeant Ludwig, and that's the 2015 Spring Training Conference in Davenport, Iowa, March 10th through the 30th, I'm sorry, March 30th through the 31st, costing not to exceed $305. Next, we have Sergeants Richter, McGee, Ouse, and Police Officer Wessels for the Disorder Control Training in Johnston, Iowa, April 14th through the 16th, that are costing not to exceed $2,120. Item number four, Keith Caspari, Director of Aviation, and that's for the IDOT Aviation Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, April 21st and 22nd, and are costing not to exceed $224, $224. Next, we have six Waterloo Police Officers for the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau in Altoona, Iowa, April 27th through the 29th, that are costing not to exceed $622. And then finally, we have Paul Huddy, Leisure Services Director, the Iowa Park and Rec Association Conference in Davenport, Iowa. I don't know if that's supposed to be April 6th or 7th, but I don't think it's supposed to be April 76th, through April 9th, at an amount not to exceed $566. Make a motion, we approve those items?
2nd.
We have a motion in 2nd, is there discussion?
I have questions for Director Tralka. How many of your, 1, 2, 3, 4 requests are required?
Director Tralka, or Dan Tralka, Director of Safety Services, none of them are for certification, but I signed off on them, so I consider all of them valuable. And I want to go through each one as, as it relates to this request. First of all, I've been to the retrainers for the FBI Academy. They offer up-to-date information on trends in law enforcement throughout the country. Now, one of the trends is when law enforcement officers are involved in the shooting and ultimately the killing of a, especially an African-American suspect, new challenges are being created. I'm sure it's going to touch on those topics. Sergeant Ludwig, at this training, officers are killing themselves in traffic crashes and through suicides, and I think they plan on touching on both of those. Area police, and number three, area police departments in St. Louis area have been successfully sued for their tactics and crowd control. That's something I take a personal interest in, something the mayor and I have discussed within the past couple of months since the events in Ferguson. One takes a realistic approach to these events, and I'm hoping that this training is up-to-date current, so we can address any such issues as they may arise without having individuals wrecking havoc on the community like we've seen in other communities. On number five, with, with the officers attending this conference, that's grant-funded by the state. I believe it's probably a requirement for us to get tens and thousands of dollars from the state for the Traffic Safety Bureau, so that we can conduct speed and drunk driving and seatbelt enforcement in the city of Waterloo.
So on item number five, do you know for sure that that is a correct statement, that we do need to send those people there in order to get that money, or is that an assumption?
That's an assumption, but it's state funds that they will pay for us to send these officers. We typically have a, this is great overtime opportunities for our officers to engage in this activity, and the state gives us so much, we typically have a hard time filling the slots, tens of thousands of dollars.
Can you say, can you say that again, this is a great overtime opportunity?
Yes.
I don't understand that.
The state will pay us to put extra officers out there.
Oh.
To enforce drunk driving, speeding, and lack of orange seatbelts.
Gotcha. Okay.
Correct date on Paul, so the April 7th to April 9th.
Okay. And then I guess I would have the same question for Director Caspari and Director Huddy, as far as their two conferences.
Deputy Chief Caspari, Director of Aviation. Your question surrounds.
Regarding your conference.
Yes, this will be the first opportunity that I will have met, that I will have had to meet significantly my counterparts throughout the state. The state of Iowa, where the Iowa Public Airport Association hosts one conference every spring, and it's usually during the month of April.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Paul.
Paul Huddy, thanks for clarifying, it is on 7th and 6th. It's actually 6 through, but I'm not going to go, I'm going to come to the council meeting, and I'll go from the 7th through if it's approved. There is not a certification, Steve, for this. It is a conference that I typically go to, we typically host it every roughly five years in Waterloo. It's a matter of trying to keep current with grant opportunities and so forth, and share information with other directors, similar positions throughout the state. But it isn't a certification. Thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Chairman, I have a question. Michelle, number five, what's a funding source? I don't recognize that funding source.
As, as Director Tralka spoke to, that is funded by a grant, so the actual state, I don't, I have to get my, the paperwork up, but I think it's Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau that actually funds doing that, so they are paying for the whole training. All we have to do is send the officers.
So that's 622, where it is coming out of the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau.
Correct.
Fund.
Yes, they will reimburse us for it. We track a grant project, and we'll charge our expenses to it, and they will reimburse us.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All in favor, vote with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Those items pass. We have pre-auths.
Pre-authorizations. We have human rights, $6,950 for commercial advertising.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just realized I skipped item number seven. I apologize. I assumed that was a part of that first bunch, correct? Authorization.
You wrote a no on all of them? 1 through 7?
I didn't, I didn't read number 7.
You didn't read number 7.
You didn't read number 7.
I'm sorry, I stopped at the travel request, and I was about to say no. So item number 7 is authorization, see, this purchase one, 2015 cargo van for the Traffic Operations Department.
2nd.
We have a motion in a second, discussion? All in favor, well, shall we try it again? Let's vote on items 1 through 7. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I would be opposed on 1 through 6, and in favor of item 7.
We now move on to the pre-authorization.
And pre-authorizations. Human rights, $6,950. Commercial advertising, leisure services, $2,179 for an assortment of additional weight equipment to support additional members, and increased class sizes for group exercise classes. Leisure services, $1,500, plus $120 shipping and handling for chipper knives. Leisure services, $1,300, tree, for trees to be planted at Hellman Field. Total project cost is $3,500. Green scene, green scene grant of $2,200, believe in balance of $1,300. Traffic operations, $2,454.75, plus $55 shipping and handling for multi-pro gas power driver and 2-inch square anchor drive cap.
2nd.
We have a motion in a second, do we have discussion? I have a question. Paul, how many members are we up to at the sports books now? I'm hearing well over 2,000.
Paul Huddy, Leisure Services Director, the last I heard, which was this morning, was 2,040-something, I think it was 48, but don't quote me, 2,040-something.
Thank you. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move that we pay the bills, which are $2,432,971.44, 2,432,971.44.
2nd.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I move that we adjourn.
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
All right, 5:30, let's go ahead and get started with tonight's regular scheduled meeting of Waterloo City Council. This is odd to be starting a city council meeting and it's sunny outside, but welcome to those of you that are in the audience, welcome to those that might be watching on our public access television channel tonight. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Wilford.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection and prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Mark Rice, our Public Works Director. Mark, please.
Please join me in reciting the Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Make a statement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart. I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and those amendments are on the consent agenda, items 1A9, 1A11, 1A12 need to all be deleted. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from March 2nd's regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B3. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which we read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $2,432,971.44, 2,432,971.44.
Second.
Counsel, any questions regarding consent agenda? It's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
I will vote yes on everything except items B-1, A through F, and vote no on those six items.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes, except 1B1, A through F.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry, item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2015 Upper Gates Shelter Project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any written objections on file to the Upper Gates Shelter Project?
No, we're not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you'd do us the honors, please, we have one estimate from Aspro, excuse me, one bid from Aspro, the Engineering's Office, estimate on this was $3,636,516.54.
The bid was from Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, the bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was $3,494.20.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the FY 2015 salvage asphalt crushing project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you'd do us the honors, please, we have one estimate from Aspro, excuse me, one bid from Aspro, the Engineering's Office, estimate on this was $3,636,516.54.
The bid was from Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, the bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was $3,494,504.20, 3,494,504.20.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the FY 2015 salvage asphalt crushing project.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number four?
No, we're not.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against the asphalt crushing project? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have two bids on this tonight with the estimate of $53,000 or $2, excuse me, $2.50 per ton.
The first bid was from CJ Moynihan and Sons of Alcatra, Iowa, the bid bond was for 5%. The bid amount is $3.70 per ton for 25,000 tons plus $10,000 for mobilization, 3.70 and 1.000.00. The second bid was from Bruning Rock Products of Decorah, Iowa, the bid bond was for 5%. Again, it's for 25,000 tons and it's $2.599, $2.599 and the mobilization is 5,000, 5,000.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, there were just too many zeros in all of that. Resolutions, please, both six and seven. Mr. Schmidt.
Item number five is adopting a resolution approving award of contract to Nagel Signs Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $125,800 and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the Riverfront Sports Park number seven and number eight lighting project and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Item six is adopting a resolution approving award of contract to Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $3,588,867.72 and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the fiscal year 2015 asphalt overlay program, contract number 874, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Mr. Schmidt, I believe that unless it's different on years, the amount, you read 3,588,867, it's actually 880.
Oh, okay, thank you.
With that correction, please, thank you.
And item number seven is adopting a resolution approving supplemental agreement number four with Amen Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount, maximum amount payable of $6,000 for professional services for the Verden Creek Tributary Drainage Improvements, contract number 840, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments regarding any of those three? Madam Clerk, their roll call votes, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lynn.
On number five, number eight, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's a federal aid project, do the feds okay that change order? Have they okayed it?
Yes.
Yes, the, actually, the DOT is in support of this particular change order.
So then we're only liable for 20% of the...
Yes, that's correct, and that amount is in the communication, in the amount of
Thanks. Very good, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any other questions regarding those four? Madam Clerk, those are roll call votes, please.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider for the first time an ordinance amending Chapter 3 Sewer Regulation, Section 8-3A-6, sewer rental charge to increase sewer rates for sewer rate increase.
Very good, Madam Counsel, any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion suspending the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn.
No.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Very good, the motion fails, we'll take it up for a second reading next week. Item 13, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move to receive, file, considering passed for the first time, an ordinance amending submission and approval of Chapter 3 Electrical Regulations of Title IX Building Regulations of the 2007 Code of Ordinances. An ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinance of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by repealing Chapter 3 Electrical Regulations of Title IX Building Regulations in their entirety and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter 3 Electrical Regulations of Title IX Building Regulations.
Second. Very good, Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, we just have a little review on this.
Greg, please. Clerk, building official, I think what Quentin just read there was more than, that was actually changed in the code, but, so, just to kind of give everybody, we talked, usually we have a work session, things like that on this, there's basically no change. I've been trying to figure out what I could stand up here and talk about. Couple little changes is their code, the last code cycle, they went from GFI to arc fault. This has went to back to arc fault, or GFI in a few locations like refrigerators, freezers, things like that, just nothing, a real big change. Us in Cedar Falls, Cedar Falls will be adopting this in the next week or so, it's the exact same code as Cedar Falls. It is also mandated by the state of Iowa, they adopted the same code January 1st, so...
Further? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilford.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Lynn.
No.
Mr. Morrison.
Yes. All right, the motion fails, we'll take it up for the second reading next week. Item 14, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to approve change order number two in the amount of $1,418 to Don Gardner Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, in conjunction with the Waterloo Public Library restroom renovation, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? Madam Clerk, please.
Yeah, you don't mark up my thing and I mess them up.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, relatively short council meeting tonight. It is time for oral comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor or the counsel, now's the time to do so, just come to the microphone, please identify yourself with your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Just come on up, whoever's here.
Cheryl Christensen, 1702 East Mitchell. My question on this one for the library, the restroom renovation, when did they do that last? I thought this was for the rec center.
Arguing both of them.
Both of them?